Yes, I need to start the recording. Now we're gonna do it.
Apologies.
I don't know if I'm gonna be able to redo that. Welcome, everyone, to the Wednesday, October 5th regular meeting of the Cohasid School Committee. We are here in the Learning Commons. We also have virtual options via Zoom and on Facebook Live. If you are in Zoom, chat is enabled. You can ask questions. All we are also streamed live on Cohasset 143 TV. We have four of the five members here. Member McCollum has mentioned he would be a bit late, so we have a forum. We'll start going. First, we will do our roll call. Mr. Carr.
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Mr. McCollum is, will be late. Ms. Saint-Ange?
Present.
And I, Mr. Dial, am present. That's for the five. We have a forum. Next, we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. We have our flag there, so they won't understand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I think we have a pretty good agenda here with some esteemed invited guests, so I won't belabor anything with any opening remarks. We will move quickly into public comment. This is a period for which the public is open to make any comments not related to items on the agenda. If you do want to inform us, you have a comment on an item on the agenda. You can do that now. Otherwise, if it's an item not on the agenda, please feel free to speak up at this point. We'll pause for a couple beats and see if we have any public comment. There's one public comment. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Jeff Moy, 33 Ledgewood Drive. I'm here today to follow up on a correspondence that I had with the school committee last spring. Specifically, I wrote an email to, at the time, Chairman McCollum. And, but the rest of the school committee was copying that, and so Mr. McCollum was not on the committee at the time. And it was just a reminder that it was, he got my suggestion to have a self-defense class for the females of our school. And Mr. McCollum had responded back and said that he acknowledged the note, and he would get back to me with some thoughts, which, to this day, I have not heard back from. This is an issue that I had, my wife and I had brought up or two and a half years ago before COVID. And it was something that maybe you guys still remember, that this took place when there was the rape threats that were taking place with some of the boys in that class, which was, this is the graduating class this past year. So now, I know that we were interrupted by COVID, but this past spring, I had a number of conversations with Dr. Sullivan on this issue, both written as well as verbally. And also, I think he mentioned that he was gonna bring it to the wellness committee as well. So I feel that not the lack of response, really, I took it personally. And I feel disrespected, given that, you know, the idea of if it was something that the committee or Dr. Sullivan didn't believe in, fine, you know, tell me directly, but not indirectly, where I never got a response back. And maybe it was the fact that, you know, my daughter's graduating, my last one was graduating this spring, and I don't really care anymore, but my wife and I still live in this community. And we care about the kids in this community. And I know you guys have sort of on your letterhead that it says empowering our students to various communities. Yeah, and I think that the suggestion that we had was one way to empower our young females, both emotionally as well as physically. And we know, we see what's going on in this world outside. And there's a lot of bad things that's happening. And, you know, it's sort of jogged my mind again when I just heard the other day that one of our graduating female seniors had been sexually assaulted, who was a freshman in college. So it's happening immediately already. So I just wanna sort of come here and sort of get a response from the committee. And after so many times we've brought it up, I think I deserve it, and my wife deserves it too.
I have some information.
All right, before you go, I'll just say thank you for, first, thank you for coming in person. It's great to see the community actually attending in person. It makes a big difference. Second, we very much appreciate your involvement and care for the schools. I recall your email when it came in. I was on the committee. I know Chairman McCollum at the time received your email. It was not, it did not fall on deaf ears. There's a lot of sympathy to the idea of having something like that in the schools. So it is an idea that was taken very seriously, and we're working on things. And it sounds like Dr. Sullivan has some further information about that, but I can tell you that it's a good idea. And in fact, one of the things that we did over the summer wasn't necessarily an acting of a particular idea, but we did, as Dr. Sullivan and about will remind us, the Summer of Safety. We talked about how to keep our school kids safe. And then we also had many people come to the school committee to do presentations about what they're doing for overall student safety, not just, you know, physical protection, but also drugs, alcohol, these sorts of things. So this is an area that the school committee is very focused on, very attuned to. And I apologize if you feel that your idea did not get the airplay that you think it deserved. It is under consideration, and we're looking at very different, lots of different things going on to enhance the wellbeing of our students, but I will turn it over to Dr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I just, because I do have some information, and I want you to know, Mr. Moy, we did take that very seriously. As Chairman Dial said, we met with safety officials. We actually discussed this particular issue with them.
With whom?
To, with the Quest Police. And we have an update that we're actually offering, a RAD course for Deer Hill students, starting out under the instruction of Officer Taylor this month. It's actually starting next week, and you, the Deer Hill community, will be getting some information about that. I also would invite you to come or to tune in to the October 19th school committee meeting, because Officer Taylor will be here, and he can update fully on some of the plans for high school as well. That's in the works, and I actually had a conversation with him about that yesterday. So I just want you to know, we do take it very seriously, and you, you know, you and I have had many conversations about, about a lot of issues throughout the years, and I've always appreciated your candor, and I very much respect you and your family and, you know, your wife, your wonderful family, and have offered a lot to Quest Public Schools. So the last thing I would wanna do personally is not follow through on that. It's just a timing thing. You're literally, at the moment when we are just putting this together to make sure it happens at the start of the year, which, you know, I had promised, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like, you know, throughout this process, knowing you never come back to me.
Well, we did talk many times and corresponded on it, but I had no information to really provide you until now. So literally, it's very timely, and it's good that we are able to, you know, to give you an answer that hopefully rises to the level of help that we, you know, we were hoping for. So, you know, I certainly would always apologize if anyone feels that I'm not communicating thoroughly. It's not my MO, and it's not what I wanted to do in this particular case. So I'm certainly sorry, you know, you had that impression or felt that way, but, you know, I definitely am happy with the information I'm able to provide you now.
So what is the plan with this Deer Hill program?
So that would be, that's, that's one of the reasons I have Officer Taylor coming on the 19th to update on it thoroughly, but I'm told that it's going to be, and this was mentioned in, it's actually mentioned in the Safe Harbors Coalition. We talked about that yesterday, because we were just discussing it as a, as a safety follow-up. The idea is to have a course for interested students at an age-appropriate level that would be instructed by Officer Taylor. And I know that Officer Lieutenant, Detective Lieutenant Rose and Officer Taylor are collaborating, and they said there's more information coming on the high school course, so, you know.
So you feel, so I know it's not etched in stone, but is it something that's related to self-defense and that type of?
That's what it is.
I do wanna close this off, because we do have a full agenda, and I don't wanna, there's gonna be stuff on this on the October 19th agenda, and since this isn't an announced agenda item, there might be people in the community who might be interested in this conversation. I don't want to leave them out. So with this, if you have further questions, comments, I'm here. I'm happy to work with you directly. I can speak on behalf of Mr. McCollum, that he did not intend any personal slight, and in fact, he thought your idea was a good one, and we spoke directly about it. And so sometimes in the, I can tell you just as a person in this role, there's lots of back and forth, and apologies if we can't get to everything, but it was, it was not a reflection on you or the concept. And we are going to actively pursue the items that Dr. Sullivan talked about, and if you want to engage, please reach out to one of us directly.
Just specific self-defense course, exactly what?
Can I just comment on something?
I guess.
First of all, Jeff, thank you, thank you, thank you. I have two daughters in school. No one protects our kids. Number one. Number two is the idea that it's a wellness committee. I serve on the wellness committee, and I gotta tell you, everybody here has a stockholder in taking, making sure our kids are safe. I've worked with the Deer Hill Fitness Business, so we've had women's self-defense classes before. I know how it works. So I can almost guarantee you, I can't guarantee that we can be here tomorrow, but I can tell you this. This will get done.
Okay.
And for you to come up here and get it done and to oil the machine is exactly what we need. And I wanna thank you, bottom of my heart, because this is, could save some lives someday. So we take it very serious, and to refer to the police department is exactly how it works.
You got it.
Officer Taylor is most, that's what we would do where, in my fitness centers, we'd get the local department to command, and it's usually a police officer who teaches, to teach some moves to keep us safe. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I want you to know that your time was worth it tonight. I really appreciate it.
And RAD stands for Rape Progression Defense. So that's exactly what it is. I don't know that.
It has a different term for the younger ones.
Yes. That, that's what it is. I mean, this is gonna be age-appropriate, but as you move up the levels, it's just, just so you're clear, it's precisely what we discussed.
Okay. Thank you. If you have more details.
Yes, October 19th.
Okay.
And I'll also reach out to you, Jeff, because I have your email.
Okay.
And I apologize that I got something up my alley. I'm surprised I didn't, like.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We listened, though. We really did.
Yeah.
So thank you. Thank you for, thank you for coming. And, you know, for those who are watching, this shows the power of being in person. Come here, talk to us. We wanna do it for you, and it does make a difference. So with that, any non-in-person?
Do not have any other questions.
Okay, great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I now turn it to our, to our invited guests.
Yes, so I'm gonna let Mr. Savage, who is our Department Chair of Science, grade 6 through 12, and Dr. Buckley, who is the founder of Cohasset Center for Student Coastal Research, and obviously a master teacher here for years, and a very esteemed former member of faculty, but really kind of always a member of the faculty. I don't think you go anywhere, because he adds so much to what we do. And I'm gonna let Mr. Savage introduce our amazing students here. But just to say, we're very happy with our community partner in CSCR and the work that they do with our high school and some of our middle school students, and it's even younger. But it's been a great collaboration, and it's, the fruits of it have really spilled over into a lot of what we do in our study program. And with that, I'm gonna let Mr. Savage and Mr. Buckley take it away and introduce our amazing students.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. My name is Ed Savage. Thank you for having me. Appreciate the time. I'll keep my comments as brief as I can, so I can let our students here present. Just to give some brief history, Jack Buckley, to my right here, retired Cohasset teacher in the Social Studies Department, who actually filled in for a long-term sub-grad in environmental science last semester. So thank you again, Jeff, for continuing to work with us in the high school community, excuse me. At CSCR, I worked over the summer with Jack's bacteria monitoring project. And the three students to my left are members of that team. I just wanna give a little bit of history on what we have done and where we're going in the future. So at the high school level, one of the things we're looking to incorporate is more experiential learning, inquiry-based learning in the science courses. We have new curriculum in middle school, and we're gonna follow that up to the high school to really have more authentic learning experiences when it comes to science. So in marine science, one of the high school electives for juniors and seniors, one of the things we're gonna do is work with Jack Buckley, to my right, at the CSCR facility to learn equipment like YSI, which allows students to learn how to test pH, salinity, dissolved oxygen, and other factors in the ocean. These folks are gonna tell us a little bit more about how we monitor bacteria and why we should care about that, especially for our summer swimmers, vacationers in town. One of the things we also offer at the high school level is students who do a certain amount of hours at CSCR for service, they get a certificate if they're able to document their hours and present to the school community what they've done and share out their results. So here in front of us, we have Bella Gaiming, we have Hannah Hesch, and we have Gabe Wilkinson, who are gonna present some of their findings, and I believe on the Zoom, we have the ability to project some of their work on their Google site, which is lovely, I have to say.
Gabe, you are, I can share your screen.
At your will.
And for the record, Vice Chairman McCollum has arrived at 6:40.
The pitch, I could try to share, too, if you have technical issues. I don't have any better. There you go. I looked at this, and it was great, so, you know.
Hello, everyone.
So my name is Hannah. I've been at CSCR. I just completed my second year at CSCR. And this, this is our website that we created for the work that we did this past summer, and it includes some data from other summers as well. But basically, to touch on what Mr. Savage was saying, at CSCR, we're basically just a student-run research organization located in Cohasset, Massachusetts, and we basically work to assemble bacteria in our local water resources and search for trends and patterns that can help the community learn stuff about recreational swimming trends and other aspects of our community.
Hi, my name's Gabriel Wilkinson. This is, I just completed my second year at CSCR, like Hannah. So why bacteria? Bacteria we found everywhere in the ocean, and they work in unison with our local ecosystems, and they have a direct impact on our health. Some of the factors that cause the bacteria to increase are seaweed algae, surface runoff, and other human involvement. At CSCR, we document and report our findings with the Board of Health to ensure that our coastal waters and town beaches are safe for recreation use. By reporting and analyzing the data we collect, we ensure a detailed database for future students to refer to in finding trends and patterns.
Hi, I'm Bella Gaiming, and I've also been doing CSCR for two years. So back to your object, monitoring's objective is to provide weekly bacteria counts at Cohasset's public beaches. And this includes Sandy Beach, Rocky Beach, and Cohasset Harbor. And we provide these bacteria counts with the Board of Health and to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And our bacteria counts are also compared to a professional lab, which we split on water samples. So next, we have our sampling process. So this is just basically the sample over a course of three days for bacteria. Every, for every team, it's different, but for bacteria monitoring, it's Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays at, we come at 8:00 or 9:00 AM. And on the first day, we come at 8:00 AM, and basically, we collect our equipment. This is our friend Jane showing us the equipment, and it's on the equipment includes the YSI, like Mr. Savage mentioned, and just like some sterilized IONX equipment, just to sample the water. And then we take all of our equipment and go out into the field, Sandy Beach, Rocky Beach, and Cohasset Harbor. And we pull out data sheets, grab our water samples, and then we obviously do the actual act of sampling. And then we take the samples back to the lab and process them using a 10-milliliter dilution and enterler, which basically helps the bacteria grow. And you can see the trays in that picture right there. We put the processed samples into those trays and put them into an incubator for at least 24 hours. And then, so let that bacteria grow and to show us how much bacteria is in each sample and at each location.
Analysis. Once we get back to the lab, we place the trays in an incubator where they incubate for 23 to 25 hours. And using a UV light, we identify which of the wells are illuminating, as you can see in the picture. And then using a NPN most probable number or a computer-generated program, we quantify bacteria that are in these IONX trays. And then after we collect the data, we put them into our data sheets and then our larger database through an Excel sheet that we can use to compare and track patterns and trends.
This page covers our data. So here we have a big sheet that has all the data we collected throughout the summer. I'm not gonna read through that, but below, I have these graphs that show bacteria counts on each day, and you can see other areas.
Some of our findings throughout the summer, we discovered that there were elevated bacteria counts in our freshwater isus areas, most notably by Sandy Beach and some of the mounds that we did that ran into the ocean. So we basically deduced that whenever it rains, pollutants and fertilizers off belong to the houses that are around this area. They enter the water and cause these spikes of bacteria that can affect the ecosystems of any of these areas.
And then like you said, the one of my theories was, we found that a certain side of Sandy Beach, Sandy Beach Bay is what we called it, almost usually had more elevated bacteria levels. And we theorized that this could be because it was, the proximity to the harbor was a little closer, and because the runoff that we were talking about right here, it was, it has more brackish water, and which causes the bacteria levels to be a little bit higher. And like the screen shows right here, the rainfall has consistently shown higher bacteria levels, not only this year, especially last year with the huge amounts of rain in the summer of 2021. And although we had less rain this year, in August, it increased a little bit, and it showed those same trends.
This past summer, we also explored other factors that contributed to the bacteria from the water. So we looked at the foam, also the sediment around the water. So never really sampled at Fisher's Dock at Cohasset Harbor. We noticed all the foam there, and we were interested in it. And we knew that it was caused by when the water enters the harbor from Gulf River during low tide, and the water gets agitated by the rocks, and then the sun incubates the bacteria. So we wanted to test that foam in relation to the water nearby. So we would collect the foams, and when we would process these foam samples, we found that there was a lot of bacteria, and usually it was all throughout the IONX tray.
And we also, one of our, we also tried to sample the sediment near Parker, the Parker Abdoff. And although we didn't find many conclusive details with this experiment, this is just one example of the things that we try to dive into, like the foam. We try to look at things more thoroughly than just bacteria. And I'm sure that we'll find more things like this to do next summer. And these are just our members. Unfortunately, only three of us could be here tonight, but those, that is everybody that is included in our team. And basically, we all, I think we always do CSCR for a different reason, but all good reasons, I think. But, um, pictures from around the summer.
I think pretty similar reasons. I think we all just want to see, we're all interested in like the lab work. I know, like, Gabe and I want to make sure about it. Yeah, we found like, just like the lab work very interesting, and also just the bacteria counts in our local water, because it all affects us.
I think I like CSCR because it allows us to engage with the community and discover different impacts on the ecosystems and human health, and I also get to leverage the knowledge from previous science classes that I get to put into CSCR. Thank you very much, all.
Just as a brief summary, I don't want Jack to speak to anything that I may have left out.
Oh, I get a lot.
I do, too.
And you can see, we can see you more fully. They can see you throughout that.
Some of the main takeaways, I think you guys alluded to at the end there were, I mean, I don't know if the locals have noticed that loads had the foam in the harbor and why that's there. And that was kind of a mystery, that we've been looking at old research reports, trying to dig deep room. But those unanswered questions are what interest me as an educator. Hopefully, the students who can be inspired by those unknowns. There's still more to learn about our local community. And that's what we're really trying to do to harbor further with CSCR and other local organizations in the science courses. And that's the beauty of having electives like marine science, where you have that freedom of creativity, and we have collaborative leaders that allow us to explore, like our superintendent system superintendent. So thank you so much for allowing us to speak.
Jack, luckily, can help clean up anything I missed out there.
I don't think you missed anything, but there are, thanks for having me here tonight, giving me, giving me an opportunity to speak. These guys did a great job. If I can say two things, I wanna talk about the grant work that we have going on, because I think the members of the school committee would like to know about it. If you don't, certainly should know. But to come back to some of the things that Ed was just saying, and things that the students have been doing. If you could sit with the students when we're around that lab table that was pictured, when work is done, and there are some serious conversations going on about what's going on in those projects about, let's test the foam, let's test the sediment, it's diving into some questions that are being asked by the community, and the students sitting around thinking about, okay, what's going on? How can we further advance our understanding of what is happening? And how does that connect to the compelling questions that are floating in the air or are right on the table that different groups in town want to know about, whether it's Board of Health, or whether it's Conservation Commission, and stormwater management issues? You know, those are the authentic issues that are driving what work that the students do. So we've had lots of great conversations with Gabe, and Hannah, and Bella, and the other people who they had up there by name. There are students, at one point, we had students sitting around from, I think, five different schools. One of the students pictured was from Situate. So there's students who are participating in the summertime, and that dovetails from other towns, and that really dovetails nicely into the grant work that we have. So I'll be brief, but what I wanted to tell you is two things about that. So we, CSCR received a grant from NOAA, NOAA Education. It's a program out of the NOAA Education Office called BEWET. It stands for Bay Area Watershed Education and Training. It came out of Chesapeake Bay. But this BEWET program exists in different regions of the country. Our grant application, there's one other acronym I gotta throw out there because it's in the title of our grant. NOAA talks about these experiences that the students are having, that Ed described as trying to integrate authentic learning into the curriculum. NOAA uses an acronym called MEWE, which is a meaningful watershed education experience, which is really what these guys are doing, having a meaningful watershed education experience. So we made the argument that the best time to do this is in the summertime. So the argument in the grant was to move the MEWE, the title was move the MEWE to the summertime, when there were fewer logistical difficulties of getting students in sustained inquiry in the field, in the community. So, you know, you don't have that summertime schedule. There's a whole set of problems in the summertime logistically, but you don't run into the academic year problems. So the funding is to engage teachers in understanding the work and how to do the work, that project-based learning work, and to bridge the summer experience with the established curriculum. the summer experience with the established curriculum. So the school committee should know that that's something that we're trying to do. And Ed had mentioned, um, the work that the students are doing, being recognized by the school. And so that's something that I don't want to say too much about because I couldn't misspeak, um, about where Cohasset High School is in that process. But where, what we're trying to do with area schools, Cohasset, Situate, Hangum, Hall, um, engaging these students, engaging teachers, engaging administrators is to create these experiences that give students the opportunity to respond to real questions in the real world and to credential in some way their learning that fits the school. And for the school to decide what the best way to credential that student learning is. And, you know, we're using the expression to build a bridge between the summertime learning and the academic year. So schools that I mentioned in the area obviously will take their own unique course. But I think that that's an important thing that you should know as members of the, um, committee that we have going on and that we have funding, um, for the next couple of years to fulfill those objectives. So I'd love to sit down and talk more with you. I am going to, um, say one last thing because I have some nice certificates for the students. Part of the Noah Grant, we have a partner, Stellwagen Bank National Marine Sanctuary. And we created a program in which the, the students who have put in a couple of years or more of research and can articulate how their work is connected to um, the mission and concerns of Stellwagen Bank, then they will be recognized as Stream to Sanctuary Watershed Stewards. So we have a certificate that's called Stream to Sanctuary Certificate of Watershed Stewardship. And, um, Bella couldn't make it, but Hannah and Gabe were there on, um, September seventeenth, is that the date? Yeah. They came on Saturday, made a, we went, all went to, um, the office at Stellwagen Bank. And, um, they made a presentation and so have this nice certificate for each one of them. Um, I had the opportunity to sign it, but it's also signed by Ben Haskell from Stellwagen Bank. Had a nice little C S C R sticker on the swag. So Gabe Wilkinson, Harry Prock. And Hannah Henson. And Bella Gani. Thanks very much.
Any closing before we?
Oh, yep, I'm sorry. The man running the camera, Carl Arnold. And there were some other students, but Carl behind the scenes also makes a presentation.
Yeah, you, they, they all met Carl. Carl was the gentleman who was creating the, as part of his Eagle Scout project. And he's actually, I'm going to show a picture in a minute of the finished Eagle Scout project. He did a robotics transport cabinet. Great kid and obviously multi-caliber, so.
Yeah, so Carl, if he's here, if he's listening, if he's in the studio. And, um, yeah, so thanks for the opportunity. And as you can see, I could, um, wax on for several more minutes. So, uh, please reach out to me, come visit us at C S C R and let's talk.
Unless Dr. Sullivan, you have anything, I'll open the committee.
Yeah, I ju- I just wanted to say just a couple of notes, um, that this authentic type of audience with authentic learning and it's so essential to us as I know Dr. Solomon agrees as we move forward. I know the committee has articulated that, that, you know, your interest in us moving in that direction. Remember when, um, Mr. Buckley talks about and the students talk about and Savage, how this type of work really helps communities and helps communities open up their eyes. Our vision is to empower students to improve communities. I can't think of a better example of the type of learning that we want to push towards in, in a vision sense than what we've just, just heard. And, you know, I, I look forward to many collaborations like this. I also just, as we think about the construction of a new school and the potential of renovations, we should have learning spaces that facilitate, and I see Mr. Savage nodding his head, you're right, because we should have learning spaces that facilitate this kind of work and this kind of partnership. So there's so much here that is, is really, I think, a catalyst to things we want to do in the future. That I, I just think that is really worthy of note. And then I also just to make this sort of a holistic picture as to what we're doing here in Cohasset is a lot of this happens in our, in our, um, student, um, what is it? Independent study program. And maybe Dr. Solomon's, and I know Jen Scott runs that. So if you just want to maybe mention a word on where that is going and how that's developing.
Sure.
So this, we could, we could talk forever about.
We could, we really could. Yes. So, um, so yes, actually Jen Scott, who is a world language teacher, has been working on, um, she actually worked part, I know she sent some work over with you over at C S C R, but she's also, um, working with myself and Principal Scott on looking at independent studies, internship programs from other college, uh, other schools in the area and looking to see how can we build ours out and how can we make ours, uh, more robust. And so that's a little bit of what Jack was alluding to is, you know, how do we make sure that these students make that connection to their, in their academic transcript? How do, how do we make that happen? Um, and so, um, we're really excited about that, um, and working to create just a more of a, I don't want to call it department, but just, um, more standardized. And so, um, it gives it, it just gives it more, even more weight and value when students are moving on, whether it's to college or career, um, that they've had these experiences and we've validated it through, through the school.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't just end by, by saying congratulations and great job, Gabe and Bella. Uh, you know, great examples of really creative Cohasset students who are going to make a difference and do great things in the future. So thank you all for representing and for everything you do.
Principal Scott is actually watching and he said, he's sorry you couldn't be here, but to tell you guys, you did a great job.
Yeah. He definitely.
Dr. Sullivan, let's do a calendar question. When does the committee review, um, program of studies?
Actually, before you, we might have the committee ask you some questions.
Oh, yeah. Um, so program of studies typically happens, um, I'm hesitant because we've done it differently. Yeah, usually like, um, in March.
Yeah, I was gonna say late winter.
Sound right?
Yeah, very early spring.
Yes.
So, uh, but, uh, just, uh, in the interest of time, I'll open up the committee. Mr. Carr, any questions, comments?
Um, so I have one question is, what other organizations are like this in Massachusetts? Are there others? Or school collaborate outside the school?
So local partners, I can really only speak for Cohasset. Jack, you probably are familiar with some, but some of the other courses I teach, like biouniversity, ecology and environmental science. We partner with like Holly Hill Farms, look at local invasive plants and native plants and how do we, you know, get rid of these invasive, we started actually in the courtyard right before us, which you can't see because it's dark outside. But a lot of times we, we brought students to Holly Hill Farm and that's more of a, a land-based course versus a course like marine science where we're getting out in the harbor, we're sampling water, we're like, why we do that. Um, I think we could partner with plenty more local organizations and that's really what we need to do as a, as a school community. But I don't know if you are aware of any others that, um, anybody else, you too?
I think there are a lot of examples, but I think that there's a lot of schools and, uh, community partners, uh, trying to work in this direction. I mean, I could
Yeah.
give you examples in a conversation either on email or.
Sure. No, I think it's wonderful what you're doing. You know, I think everybody knows where it is and what you do there, I think is sometimes a bit of a mystery, but congratulations on it.
We just need to print up the T-shirts, free the buses. Free the buses, free the students.
Yeah. And I guess the only thing I'd say is just like, you know, as you think about what you do after high school, colleges love this kind of stuff. I've heard you that find many things like this to do. It makes you very unique. So good luck to all of you. This is wonderful.
Mr. G.
Guys, thank you so much for reminding me how blessed we are with this view. This beautiful ocean, we're not landmarked, we're just so blessed to be here. And that said, Jack, and, you know, I appreciate what you're saying about the programs of studies. I think that's important that we try to integrate that in, uh, with our studies, especially in the future. And I know that I was glad to hear Dr. Sullivan talk about the new school approach. So any kind of help that you could do to try to convince the community that this would be one of the foundations that we're trying to build these learning spaces because this is going to be a challenge to get the funding in the next couple of years for this. And this would be a great understanding of why and where their, um, dollars are going because this is not only educational, this is the future. This is a future. So to bring this in as programs of studies, I think it's genius. So I'm in whatever I can do to help. I just got to say, and I, I speak.
I, I know I've spoken too much, but I do want to just say one thing to follow up with Mr. Carr. Um, I think our program is definitely unique in the, in the sense that students get to do some research that a lot of students don't get to do until they're sophomores or juniors in college. And there, in, in, e- even though I had said, I think that there's a lot of programs, a lot of schools doing that. We got some good stuff going on that is incredibly distinct from a lot of other programs.
Absolutely.
I couldn't think of that other organization, honestly, before I told you of that question. You are, I mean, since the late nineties, Jeff.
I mean, it is something that needs to be sustained.
Yeah, and it's unique also because it's obviously just the title of the organization and it's about our coastline and it's about our, our natural environment. As a school, um, the high school and as a, as a district, you know, we need to, and I, I believe this as we look at new building, we need to build facilities that incorporate that thought that what makes one of the factors that makes us special is we're a coastal town. And we can, we can bring these, um, these issues into our own learning, uh, more definitively. And I, you know, I really wish that had been more, uh, that had been a real thought back then, but it just wasn't. But it needs to be when they built the original building and renovated the building, but we need to, because students would be capitalizing on, on what we have here, but we need to think forward with that in mind. Um, so, yeah, we need to do what, what C S C R has done in many ways. Continue to partner, but also build our program with a lot of that as a model.
Hold on.
Yep. If I could say one last thing and then I promise to go home. I don't know if members of the committee know that, um, C S C R actually evolved out of, out of a professional development program by Cohasset teachers that I was one member of a team of five in nineteen ninety-eight. And it.
I knew that, I've seen the picture.
And it's, you know, it was a school initiated program. It became the summer institute without a home. It was just a program that four or five teachers were running during the summertime as an independent thing, sort of with the school committee's blessing. And then the story goes on from there, but, um, we've got a great collaboration going and great support from Dr. Sullivan and everybody else in, in the buildings. And, um, if you didn't know that little tidbit, I thought it was worth emphasizing that it's always been one foot in the school, one foot in the community.
Mr. McCollum, anything you have?
Great job. Thanks for sharing that with us. And, um, this is exactly the type of, you know, enriching, meaningful, experiential-based learning experience that, you know, I, I want to see more of in the schools. So thank you a lot of that, students. Um, I'm sure that, you know, it's, it's much more meaningful than perhaps in-class instruction in that your team of students will remember at least the highlights from that for most of your life, doing that and what you sort of extract from it as opposed to something that was maybe just, um, spoken to you in a classroom, you know, and that's why we need more P D L, more product-based learning, more experiential-based learning. Um, in this district, I, in every district, but it's the district that I'm concerned about. So I loved it. I mean, when I said, when I started hearing what you were doing, it's like, I'm just thinking to myself, exactly, this is what we need to do. Okay, out there utilizing our natural resources and our community, you know, coastal community, um, to extract some meaningful, you know, academic experiences from. And I echo Dr. Sullivan's sentiment that, you know, future facilities, should we end up building a new school, should absolutely accommodate, um, not only accommodate, but foster this type of, of, you know, marine biology, marine science, you know, coastal education. And I'm just, you know, going through my head, all these kinds of ideas of what we could do there, you know, to do that. So like, um, you know, I'm sure we do the best I think we can with what we have right now. But obviously there are facilities, um, school facilities that could, um, that I think advance what we might accomplish through experiences like this. But thanks for doing this with the students. And I think you guys have been interested in it and I wish the best of luck in your biology, maybe I think. Thinking about majoring in biology. Are you guys all seniors?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Any of you in Mr. Savage's medical club?
No.
Actually.
Just to show you, it's a medical club, which is just fantastic.
I love that. Yeah. And I guess we never got to the bottom of the foam is. I wondered that too, right? Still working on that?
That's, there's some history in there. That's a, that's a newer project that we.
Are you guys still, are you guys still working on that or?
Yeah, we're definitely gonna research it more in the future. We, we, we have established some links with some microorganisms and such, but we're, are still gonna research it.
Great. All right. Maybe we'll keep us posted, figure it out.
Why don't you come back at the end of the year?
Don't so many.
Um, thank you all. You, you all spoke beautifully. I'm so impressed by all of you. And I think it's so exciting to have your own questions that you're researching is way more thrilling than just going through a textbook. And you're getting to do the science and, and actually live the scientific method. So awesome job. Love your website.
Thank you also for your support. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So, um, we learned foam is gross. That's, that was, and I suspected that, but your experience, experiments have validated it. Um, I'm gonna echo, uh, Vice Chairman McCollum more of this. This is, this is, this is awesome. This is, this is what we should do. And it seems like you, you guys enjoyed it. Um, and you're very learning one. Um, one thing that I, I did, I did, I think, may have picked up on a veiled ask. Is there some ask or, um, need from the committee, uh, with respect to, I think, accreditation or something? Did you mention that a couple of times?
Oh, like can this count as an independent?
Is that, is that, was that what the, um, I guess that would be an interesting thing to think about. So, um, I think we should, should think about that. If that's not already on the table. There's a lot of quietness, so there might be.
There's been a history there. I don't want to overstep, but I, I do know that we have a, a the ability, like the name is escaping me, but some sort of certificate for watershed.
Watershed stewardship.
Thank you. That these students are definitely, they have enough hours to document it. I can work with Mr. Scott and Ms. Scott, Jen Scott, to figure out the credentialing around every originally at the school. And that's the evolving conversation. That's always been on the program of studies as long as I've been here. I think we can just do a better job of promoting that, compensizing it and then maybe, um, going further with it.
Right. We're making it tighter, more consistent and, um, having a more clear criteria for what those expectations are for around.
So I, I, if there's anything the committee can do on that to score, probably not, but I personally like that idea. It's not only do you need to have the offerings, you also need to have the incentives and make sure kids take up those offerings and they don't, you know, it's, 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 it's trackable. So great job. Thank you for coming and, and you made your time, uh, and really, uh, really helpful and enlightening. And I really like where this is going. So thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll follow up with an email. I already said it.
Thank you. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you so much.
So our next invited guest is a virtual invited guest, I believe, um, Mr. Erlinson to, uh, talk to us about, uh, Cohasset, Trent, Arizona. Welcome.
Yeah.
Paul Erlinson.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna get my, uh, request to meet with you guys a lot in earlier than Jack next time because that's a hard act to follow, but how about there, guys? And, uh,
I can share any of the document if you'd like, or I can share, which would you like?
Uh, once, if you want to share yourself, I don't have it available to me right quick without having to search for it, but we, we're back again. We're, we're gonna try to run our, our trip again this year. We're, we've already done some surveying of our students and parents to see if there's interest and there's a lot of interest. Uh, we're hoping to get about twenty-four, maybe as many as twenty-six. We'll see what the numbers are. I had an out to the Grand Canyon, Bryce. We have a couple of different changes this year. One of the things we're gonna try to do is we're gonna, instead of a six-day trip, a, a five-day trip. Mainly because it's gonna bring the cost down a little bit. We were concerned a little bit with inflation. Mainly because it's going to bring the cost down a little bit. We were concerned a little bit with inflation and trying to keep this, the numbers down. But also I'm old and five days straight, six days with these kids was, it ran me ragged. So we're going to try to do a little bit more, more reduced trip. Saturday to Wednesday is the, is the goals right now. So we're going to lose one day maybe in Sedona, but we're going to add a few things. We're going to have a off-road vehicle tour out to a slot canyon that really isn't visited that much. So it'll be a nice way to kind of get out there and see some of the, the off-road places that, that most people don't get a chance to see. But other than that, it's going to be pretty much the same trips we've had in the past. Again, we're trying for about twenty-four. I might, if we have a lot of interest, I might up that to maybe twenty-six or twenty-eight probably max. But we tried to, we had thirty-two last year and getting those kids on a plane, oh, was, was a moment that I'm going to keep suppressed for a little bit longer here. So we try to keep the numbers down a bit, but I love to entertain any of your questions you have here. Right on. By the way, the cost right now, we're, we're probably going to bring it down under three thousand, about twenty-eight fifty last year. I think it was a little bit over three thousand, so it's still up there. But we were pleased to get it down a little bit more to make it a little more affordable for families and such, so.
Great. And so, and so the request is for the committee to approve the trip, right? Just your contact before
Yeah, we, we want to use the school facilities to kind of meet with parents. We have a parent night getting ready to be scheduled, but I wanted to wait for your approval before we sent that information out to parents to have them come in for an info night. And then we'll use the after-school time to kind of meet with kids as we get closer to the date and so on. So yes.
School, school trip. Yep, so with that as context, Mr. Carr, any questions?
I want to go.
Lots of parents have asked for chaperone too, but I think Superintendent Sullivan would agree that we want to have chaperones who really owe the district something to, to make sure that we're doing our job out there. But we love the parent interest, but we, we're going to keep it in the teacher's hands for now.
Looks like a wonderful trip.
Yeah.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes, Bob, well, thank you for doing this. We appreciate it. Is this eighth grade?
Yes.
And you've done this in the past, Bob. I don't know if they
Third trip and the fourth trip we've done total. So we had a couple of years off COVID, but two years before and then last year. So fourth time, charm.
And do, do we know what airline we're looking at?
It will not be Spirit.
Yeah.
We did that in one year and that's, that's never going to happen again. But now it was American last year, I believe, and also United. The high school did a trip as well for the kids that missed it due to COVID. I don't believe they're running a trip this year, but I know Mr. Forten might be looking at something in the years to come. But it'll probably be American or United, whatever grand classroom they do the, the travel arrangements. But we kind of have veto power over some of the more dubious carriers.
And this is during, this is during spring break, correct?
Yep.
Because I can, on my experience, because we did this exact trip as a family last year. And we were actually stuck in, it wasn't bad stuff.
Players?
Because of the war. So just something to look out for, you know, being in an airport for twelve hours and getting home at four in the morning, so.
Yeah, the first year we had Spirit, that's what happened to us. We were delayed a long time here and there. So we're trying to go with some places, have a little more options in case there is
Yeah, well, that's great because I can only, it's too bad you guys won't be able to go to Sedona because that is one beautiful place. But flags stay up and it's just, I think the experience for the kids is going to be awesome. It was, for me it was, so.
They do come back changed. It's, 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 it's a great trip.
Yeah, good. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
But thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Erlinson, I know this is your first rodeo, so I'll ask the same questions I always do, especially in light of your comments earlier that it was a little taxing in terms of, you know, getting the kids in the plane. What are the, what's the, what's the anticipated ratio of students to chaperones this trip?
Um, yeah, so our goal, the trip is scheduled around twenty students with three chaperones, but we're hoping to get up to twenty-four students with four chaperones. And I do have, besides myself, John Mills, Principal Mills is, is volunteered to come along this year too. I have three other female staff members as well. So we're going to have a good equal representation of male females to kind of help out with all the, the students. But so twenty, so maybe about a six, six to one ratio is our goal.
Okay, that's, that's good. Is that better than last year? Because it sounds like it was maybe a little bit too onerous on the chaperones.
Four chaperones with thirty-two students. And we just kept letting more kids in because we really didn't want to say no, some, you know, and, and yeah, this year we have to say no.
Okay, that's perfect. So that's good to know. I'm glad that that's being addressed. And then your comments about different gender chaperones leads me to my next point is what is the evening security plans? And how do you, so not only how do you supervise the kids at the nighttime accommodations, but also how do we manage the, you know, segregation of the genders for nighttime as well?
Hotels actually have their own security they hire that are in the, the, the floors themselves. They, they keep us to, to two floors usually. They'll usually have a gender floor and one and then the, the other. We, we run them pretty long, all day long. And so when they get back, they, they actually are tired. So we had, didn't have any issues last year. We moved that a lot of kids. The first night was always interesting. That's where they test. But we handled it pretty well and don't anticipate too much initially this year either that we can't handle.
Okay, so the genders are on separate floors generally?
In general, that's what they do, yes.
Perfect, thank you. Great. And thank you for running this trip again for the kids. Appreciate it. It's a great, it's a really great experience with us. Thank you. It's not easy. I, I, I accompanied many teachers when I was a high school student and I, I know, even then I appreciated how, how taxing it was. So thank you for doing that. It's, it's no small task. You got a lot of precious cargo there. So thank you for, for doing this for them.
My pleasure.
Sounds
I don't have any questions. I just think it's a great trip. I'm glad you do it and the kids are lucky to be able to show.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I echo all of those comments, Vice Chair McCollum covered the supervision. It feels like you have that well at hand. You know, again, I do want to recognize this is not necessarily in your, your core job description. This is something you do above and beyond. And we very much appreciate that. It's so valuable for the kids to have these experiences. I know, and I've said this before, I went on these trips as a, as a student and they last, the memories of that last with me. I was just literally thinking about that and how wonderful it was. So thank you for doing that. And with that, I guess I will entertain a motion to approve the trip to Arizona for the, I think your class as discussed here at the meeting. Mr. Carr, I think beat you to it with a second, second. All in favor? All opposed? Carries unanimously. And Mr. Erlinson, please enjoy your trip. Dr. Sullivan, please do whatever you do to make that a reality.
We will absolutely. Thank you very much.
Night, the information right now. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Have a great night. Appreciate your patience.
You too, guys. Have fun.
All right. But it feels like it's been here a while, but we had some front-loaded invited guests, which were excellent presentations. But now we'll move to our school updates with Dr. Sullivan telling us what's going on in the schools.
Yeah, so I, I'm not going to belabor the updates with this one. We do, our, we're starting our superintendent's advisory group later this month. So we will have a, a kind of a rotation. Mercedes had a volleyball game again tonight, so I told her she didn't need to, to come here. I knew that you'd have students in front of you presenting as well. But I did want to just present a couple of things that were interesting if I can figure out a share my screen here. It's worth the wait. So just a couple of updates from some things that happened today. So we did meet as a food and nutrition subcommittee. And one of our goals was to circulate, notice I'm not in the picture, but you can see my lunch there in the chair. But we did, as a group, go to the middle and high school lunch. We actually observed a full middle and a full high school lunch. And we, we dined on a, a good amount of offerings. And, you know, we'll, we'll, I think, talk about this a little more, a, a little bit more substantively later in the meeting. But I wanted to show you some of the images from our gathering there. Again, here we were eating, eating the food and that is Marilyn Hardin, our Director of Food Services. And of course, you owe, God, and the kind of an expression, that's, I'll probably get that later. And then of course, Mr. McCollum and Mr. Kearney. And here, here we are in some of the fresh offerings every day that are in the middle that students can choose from. We did hear some of our specials that we had, and apparently today was a hot grilled chicken on a roll. But you can see a very fresh deli counter that's there, just offering a, a variety of foods for the, for the students. They did have local baked haddock. And then there's some right, right from Reds, so it's locally, locally caught and, and brought right to the table here. So this was nice to see. That happens as a, a common feature at our, our high school. We can go further with this, but it was very nice to see on this particular occasion. That's just the main, it's not just, it's the main entree. This is what I ate. I had the spaghetti and meatballs and some of the Tuscan chicken. It was absolutely delectable. It's delicious. And actually, the, I believe, the woman who's serving on, on our left here, her name is escaping me, but she does run a, an after-school course for middle school students in cooking. So that's a nice, nice like connection there too. But it was, it was a lovely meal. There we are in front of the, some of the displays that Mr. Kearney fought so hard to make sure we have in our, throughout our cafeteria. And they're, they're being put to very good use. Here's another one just outside of the cafeteria talking about early grab and go options. I just, I just took it as, it goes through several, several slides. And this is our famous
There it is.
vending machine. I didn't do a very good job with the shot because there's the colossus at the bottom. But I, I'll have you know that it, it has, you can see fruit, apples and oranges, fifty cents. And it has some lovely lunches that are very nutritious on the top for three dollars a piece, which I actually think I'm going to buy some of these, knowing it's a very, really, really good buy. And mainly very healthy foods or foods that are maybe attractive to students, but not, not necessarily unhealthy either. So I think it's a very successful vending machine. And I was told by Marilyn that if, as the students put in their PIN codes that they put in when they go through the lines, the first offering is free. So that's something that students should know. So as you put, you put in your PIN code to buy it, you can have a free choice just to get going there. So that's something we'll make sure we advertise.
Like, could you get a free cold lunch?
Yeah, yeah.
Fifty cent fruit? Just trying to make the most of it.
Your choice.
Going in with my kids' pin.
I have a feeling every purchase for yours is free.
So I know we'll talk about that more later in the visit, in, in specifics. But all right, there's Carl. We mentioned Carl. I want to get his, his last name correct here. It's Carl Fernan? I'm probably saying it wrong. Fernal? It's Carl. Okay, but a wonderful senior who is in the process of achieving his Eagle Scout distinction, which is quite an honor. Wonderful kid. This is in the robotics club and that is a, we endorse this as this project. And I signed off on it and it's a, a transport that's created. And I didn't really do it justice because as, as you, you turn it around, it has latches that make sure when it's put in a vehicle, it's, it secures. And so when they go off to competition, robotics competition, this is what they'll use. So great job, Carl.
And they actually separate too. He can pull them both apart too. There's also, he's very clever.
Like a magician's box.
Yeah, I just like thought of everything.
But great, great project. And then I wanted to just mention that it was a few years ago, this coming week, that a group called Teach to the Shore from Mrs. Perel's class spoke to the school committee. And with your support, we were able to make the distinction on our, on this coming Monday of Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it's, it's something that can be created from a few levels. And one of the levels that it can be created from is in local school districts. So that the holiday in terms of class at public schools, it is called Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I have a nice picture of you signing the proclamation, Mr. McCollum, that I couldn't find it in time. So I'll spare you that, but I do have a lovely proclamation.
Enough pictures of me already.
So that's it. So I just wanted to share those, those updates. And I don't know if Dark Scott, do you have anything to update on in terms of professional development that happened or is this happening or anything?
We do, we have, so this Friday, we, we will be here, children will not, but we have a professional development day. Elementary, it's very building-based this year and it's a full day that is building-based on Friday. So the high school, they will be focused on their NEAS self-evaluation. And someone from NEAS is coming to kind of kick it off with them on Friday morning. And we'll do a presentation with them and then they've already established their teams. They already have their work cut out for them, so they'll be doing that on Friday. The middle school will, they're working up, broken up into several things in the morning. Curriculum Associates, who is the company that owns iRay, which is our diagnostic. They are coming in to do some professional development on the math diagnostic to teach teachers how to look at the data, how to read the data, what to do with the data. That's all part of a grant that we received from the Department of Ed last year. So they're the first schools that are, that are going to have it the following become the twelfth and thirteenth. They'll be going to Osgood and to Deer Hill to do the same training with the staff. So all staff are getting, getting that professional development, which is really good. And then they can take what they've learned and then look at the ELA data. So, but it's just a really, just having that protocol. And then also at the middle school, science is working on OpenSciEd. That's their new curriculum. So they are glad to have the time to continue their work and build out their units and lessons. And then all the other departments are going to be looking at their materials, probably really looking at one unit and lesson and the materials that go with that through a culturally responsive lens. They're using the checklist that we'll be using in the curriculum review process, but Mr. Mills is going to roll that out with them. So they'll be looking at their materials and have done a really nice job with that. And then the elementary, it is literacy, literacy and more literacy. So TLA, Teaching, Learning Alliance, the consulting group we've been with, they're coming in for a half a day at each school. And then on the flip side of that time, they'll be working on their new curriculum. So it's a half day on, on Friday, but I'm excited about it. But I really like that it's building-based too. It's really, it's what they want and what they, what they need, you know, to do their, their jobs better. So I'm excited about that. And then TLA will continue throughout the year. Oh, and we received a scholarship from TLA. We got an additional three days. I applied for a scholarship and we got it. So that adds to our embedded professional development for our staff, which is lovely.
Thank you. And a couple of follow-ups from some items that we had discussed and the committee wanted some information on. I believe, Mr. Kearney, you had asked about the financial literacy timeline and process. Right now it's slated for February tenth. And I'm sure you'll, you'll receive invites to that. It's a, it's a great event. That could change, but that's because it's a little bit out, but that's, that's the date we're, we're playing around breakfast. We did talk about breakfast a little bit. And one of the questions was, was it impacting instruction and instructional time? And I sat down with, talked to Marilyn, talked to Alex and I should say Principal Solomon and Principal Farrell about that. And they didn't feel it was. In fact, they felt it was more of just an adjustment, particularly at Osgood. I had mentioned the putting their code in that they, you know, when students go through, they have to. And it takes some time to teach the younger kids that and to make them remember what their code is. They're already seeing a huge difference. They didn't think it was, it was an issue moving forward. The numbers have leveled down a bit. And I'm told that indeed families do know if they look at their My School Bucks, if their students have, there's no purchasing because it's free. But if they've gone to the process of getting a breakfast, they might not know exactly what they ate in there. But if you look, that can prompt some questions because, you know, you'll know that they got something. And then the, the last one was our school resource officer who will be, you had asked about him presenting and he'll be presenting next meeting. So that's great.
Great. Senior study visit, that's on the agenda?
Yes, the senior study visit was, thank you. That was actually probably the most major thing from a, that happened this, this, this particular week on, last week I should say. Last, what was it, Wednesday? Last Wednesday, we had a visit from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. They visited us as I had They visited us, as I had mentioned, and I had put in my newsletter several times. It, it really followed that course. We were, there was about four of them and then some architects who consult with them. And what we, and we had a, a great contingent of Mr. McClellan was there as school committee representative. We had our, our district leadership there, some of us, actually it was Dr. Skollins and Swell and myself were there. And then we had obviously our two school principals, because we were looking at the middle and high school. And we started with a brief presentation regarding what went into our SOI. And I outlined clearly the, what they wanted to hear about, which were the facility challenges and also the academic educational challenges that are created by the facility challenges. They were able to ask questions. I think they found that the architects in particular found it clarifying. I included a lot of pictures that, so they knew what we were looking at. And then, and we, I also should mention, there were members of the select board there, there. And then there was a member of the capital committee, because they did, they did request folks who, obviously they're part of the town. We had Michelle Leary, who's our assistant town manager, Nick Berardi, who's our facilities manager. So we, we had the appropriate people in there, and they wanted someone who was versed in the town funding system. So it was important to have those folks there. And we really appreciate their support and the work they did and the time they took to be there for, for that meeting. And we then went on a tour. It was a smaller group, but it was still a fairly large group. We went around the, the facility, really pointing out the areas that we had noted in the SOI. But also showing the areas we are proud of and wanted to make sure they understood that we were, we were really taking some pride in, in the appearance of the building and also in rooms like the warm room right now. This is a, a space that is, is a great space and it's, we should be proud of it. But we, we were able to point out that unfortunately, those are few and far between within our building. And they, they could, I think they could see plainly what we had mentioned in the statement of interest. On top of that, we also, we were told that, you know, and I want to make it clear, we're not in the MSBA. We're not, we haven't been invited to be part of that program. That we will be told about that within the next couple of months. And then there are some technical steps that lead up to a feasibility study if indeed we are accepted. So I'll be keeping the committee in the loop and the community through you in the loop regarding next steps and where, where we stand.
So a new building for next year.
I wish. Sign me up for that, but I, you know, it's a, it's a process.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Skoll. Any questions from the committee open forum? All right.
I just, we're talking about seniors, the, the walk.
The, the senior study, yes.
Senior study, yeah. Yeah, so that, so right now they're in the committee to decide if we're going to the next step.
Correct. So what they do is they, I can't remember how many schools they said were in the senior study stage. But obviously, if you put a, you put a, you know, a large statement of interest like we did in there, they want to come and take a look at it and make sure things match and to ask specific questions. And we showed them everything. We showed them our, you know, our controls, everything that they wanted to see. We, we showed them. And so now we're, we're in the process, just like all the other schools who were invited to be in the senior study are, are waiting to hear if, if indeed we are invited in. And it looks like a couple of months, November, I think is what they were, they were saying, yeah.
Late November, early December.
Correct.
So that would, so that would give us a kind of a clear where we're going to go with the future invasions too.
Well, so what, what, what will happen is they'll, once we're invited in, then they're going to ask us to do their, like I said, I, I don't want to misspeak, but there are some technical steps that we have to do in terms of certifications and such. And then there's a, what's called a feasibility study. And that's when we would be approaching the town to, to, to help with that. It's, it's a, there's a cost, a hefty cost associated with that. And that's when they look at all the factors. It's just as it sounds. What, what other, what are the factors that we need to consider to make this project feasible?
And I guess I, you know, I want to speak to the community about, someone who has kids in this building. There is a, there's a huge need for this because like, we have a capacity. We have teachers that don't have classrooms. You actually got a car with a bell. I mean, it's ridiculous. So like, I, I also, I'm concerned about like, you know, how do we keep this positive too? How do we, how do we like, get, I, I'd just like to see more of a group effort from the parents. I'm not seeing that. And maybe that will be said, I know, I, you know, when, when time comes out. But I, I just want to just throw this out to the community. If anybody's listening, this is the time that you need to act. Because I, I'll be honest with you, I hear parents now complaining about what we have now in my little area, the middle high school. And where were you four years ago? Where were you five years ago? You don't want to be where I'm at. And that's gonna, your children are not going to see part of this process. I can tell you that, that I'm going to be fully supportive of it because I think it's what the children need. I think it's what the community absolutely needs to be able to give our children what they need. And that's some elbow room and some, some labs and some different things that they're, because let's face it, we got, we have a really good group of students that could really elevate. And we got to give them that elevation to do that. And we also have to, but my, my, I guess my plea is to the community to get involved in these steps. And whatever we can do, Lydia, if it's getting a big sign telling everybody, he might have to get you to bring out that stop sign that says, hey, there's a meeting. And, and I'd just like to see more of that from, I don't know if it's the committee members that we can go out there and educate folks that are in your area? Because I'm trying to educate the folks in, that I'm around a lot. And those parents are going to be like, you know, why do I need to build a new school? So I think those are the things that we need to do as collaborative as much as we can to get that in there and have a parents' group here, even if it's two parents. Like, amazing what two people can do. So if there's two parents out there, and Craig and, and Lance and Lydia, this is, this is, these are, these are, this is the group that you guys really got to have to kind of motivate these folks to do it. I'm there to help, but I'm just saying that it's really going to be, because I don't know who else that, that will do it. I mean, there's no, you know, like, we just got to kind of get that parent. Because once we get some of them just to commit an hour or two hours, then they're committed. All of us are here now because we've committed so much more and more time. It's like, you know, we're, we're fans of it, right? We're part of it. So like, I guess my question is, my, my thought is, I, I just wish the community would listen to what we're saying and try to really understand that a lot of thought process has gone into this. So out of respect for what's going on in the process, please go to some of these meetings.
And Mr. Kearney, thank you for that. And as we get into more focus of what this process looks like and how it goes, there is absolutely a required element of community engagement. So we'll be resting heavily on our communication subcommittee. And we'll figure out ways to make sure the community is aware to benefits of this and get the community involved. So your, 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 your comments are, are well-founded. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to agenda item E then, unless there's anything else on the school updates, Dr. Skoll.
There, there, there's.
So agenda item E, we have an opening item as an item for vote, as you will call it our last meeting. Mr. Kown, we're not at the meeting, I think, last meeting. But we had a presentation by Dr. Sullivan on his school goals. We had a few comments at the end of that. There were no questions, at least to me, for the interim time between meetings. And so now this has come to an actual vote for approval. So first I'll open the forum, see if anyone has any questions, concerns in the interview weeks about the goals that were presented at the last meeting.
Does one agree just filling your page nicely? I got it. It's just the word capital.
Should have just let that.
I know, but it's, but, but it's fine. It's changed.
Can we add a new goal then?
Is that clarifying? Because I obviously was.
Yes.
Part of the subcommittee meeting about these, any, or any changes made after last meeting? Okay. And I'm.
All right. In that case, I will request a motion to approve the super junior's goals that presented at the last meeting and again at this meeting. So a motion from Mr. McCollum, any second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Carr. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion unanimous, the carries. Dr. Sullivan, your goals are approved and stamped in the order of the school committee.
Thank you very much.
Good luck in accomplishing those.
I will, we'll move, move with your guidance in a collaborative fashion.
All set.
All right. So now we'll move it over to Dr. Skollins. We have an update on everybody's favorite four-letter test. The MCATs. Dr. Skollins, take us away.
It's going to be, this is a brief one. This is just to kind of let you know where things are at. The, the results were released last week. We had some raw data prior to that. But they, the information was embargoed until last week and then they released it. So we have the data, we have the final results. We haven't had a huge opportunity to dive into all of it yet. But I can give you some overviews from the state itself. When they were looking at some of the English, they saw that there were signs of recovery in, in English for, across the state. And they saw some little losses in math. But our data shows that we had good growth. So one of the things you want to make sure is that you have a growth window of like 40 to 60, and we did. So everybody pretty much fell in there. So that was good. We still have to look at some things that we need to improve. We did have the pandemic, so we need to find out where those pieces are. And so we'll be doing that. I'm working with the reading specialist and math specialist in the next week to go over the data analysis with them. Teachers have their data. And then I'll be working with all the, the grade levels that administer this to dive into the data with them and look for trends and patterns. We'll be looking at the 2019, we'll be looking at all the data. But if you look at what the state did, they took the 2019 data and then looked at the 2022 data. Because there wasn't any data for '20. We have pandemic, and then '21 was kind of an odd assessment time. So, so anyway, it's not that they're not, they're not eliminating it or not giving it value. They are, it's just that they really want to see what's our, where were we in 2019 and where are we now in 2022?
It's not, which, to be clear, it's not, we're not doing that. It's the state is doing it. That's how they're making us.
Exactly. So, so, I mean, like I said, I mean, there's areas that we have to work on, but in general, we had some nice, we had some nice movement. And so I'm pretty happy about that. And we're pretty much mostly above the state for a lot of things. So, but I haven't, like I said, we haven't really done a huge analysis. So I will have that ready for you at another time when I can take you through all the data.
Right.
Pair, oh, for parents though, I don't have a date yet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I was going to ask that.
I know. So we, so I heard this. Well, yeah, they did say that this week we would know, but it's Wednesday. I don't know. So.
We want our presentation to coincide with the, you know, the parents getting.
Right, exactly.
And when, when do you think that's going to be, next week?
They said that they would let us know this week when it was going to happen, but I haven't.
Did you hear it was going to be a little more delay too?
Because everything's delayed. Like, usually not embargoed this late.
Right, right. Exactly. Yeah. Because it was embargoed until the 28th, 29th.
Supply chain issues?
I gotta be honest, I was like, how do I not, have I not seen this?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why this is just an update on where we are with it. But we are looking around it and, you know.
Yeah.
There's, there's definitely some, some shining things.
Absolutely, yeah.
Some things we want to, want to work on, but all in all, we're fair and okay.
Yeah, and I just think it's great to have that data. And then along with the other assessments that we're doing, it'll give us some nice pictures of where we need to go, how we can help our kids.
Open forum, anything from the committee members? There are nothing. Thank you, Dr. Skollins. I'll move on now to our Director of Student Services, Ms. Barbara Swonka, for a special education update.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.
Ms. Swonka?
So we are going to start with my typical format, and Dr. Skoll is going to help me out with that, with the data sharing.
I will.
And then we'll move into the items that are on the agenda. So as promised, have a new format for my data sharing this year. You can see there in our, in our slideshow there, so our special education school data, that's my, for the 2022. And then I have a slide for each month. So if you want to look at the month of September here, what we can see is at the bottom there, the current disability category percentages. And then if you look under September, we can see there at each school, the percentages of the active IUPs in each school.
And, and Ms. Swonka, just where would, I know one of the ones that we often hear from parents with dyslexia, where would that fall within the categories?
So if you look down the category areas where you see their SLVs, which are the specific learning disability categories, the categories within specific learning disabilities are in the area of reading, which tends to be a predominant one, followed by math, and then also have pop-up in writing, you see that that's our biggest disability category, as it is for most school systems. And as I said, reading falls under that. And if you, you are interested in the percentage of how much falls, you know, in the area of reading, I can certainly bring that next time.
I think it would be helpful to list the subcategories under SLD, just so that we can.
Break them out.
Yeah, just, you know, as an indebted subcategory is the three for dys, dyslexia, dysgraphia.
Described.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Swonka?
Please. What is, what is health, by the way? Is that a 504? What is, what is?
Yes, so that health category, actually it can, there are several different areas that can fall under that. It certainly can be, you know, a, as we think of like a physical health impairment for a student, it can also fall under the categories of, for example, you know, attention deficit disorder, even anxiety can also.
So it can be 504?
Nope, these are, that's a separate area. This is all for students on IUPs.
Oh, okay.
Yes. It can be a qualifying area for a 504. You're correct in that, as can actually some learning.
Okay.
The difference between the 504 and the IUP really is that the IUP, when we have gone through our identification for students, it is a requirement that the students require specialized instruction. As opposed to on a 504, students need specific accommodations to access the curriculum. But you're correct that a lot of the disability categories are the same for you.
Okay, thanks.
Move on.
Yeah. So in September of 2022, where we just ended, what we're looking at here is our meeting types at our elementary, our secondary, our out-of-district and our total meeting areas. If we go across, you can see that in terms of annual reviews at the secondary level, that would be the middle school and high school, we conducted two annual reviews. There was one reevaluation meeting at the secondary level and one reevaluation in our out-of-district meetings. So we have two reevaluation meetings so far to date. At the elementary level, we have held one initial evaluation and three initial evaluations at the middle school, high school level. Really what that looks like is that some initial evaluations were probably started at the end of last year and then carried over into September to finish them up. So there are a total of four there. When we are looking at our referral sources, that is where did our initial evaluations come from? We can see at the elementary level, that one came from MTSS. And at the secondary level, two came through MTSS and one came from a parent. What we want to kind of remind you of here is that our MTSS meetings are so that support services can be put in place for students. Sometimes through MTSS, those tiered supports are enough for students. Sometimes we will go through the different tiers in MTSS and ultimately end up with a referral to special education. It is, it is, it is neither good nor bad, I guess. If you stay in tiers or if you end up with a special education referral through MTSS, it just is one way that you can get there. And another way is through collaborating with our parents and having parents say, I am concerned to a point to which, you know, I think we need to move to a special education evaluation. And we go ahead and do that. And then you can see that there were, there was an independent evaluation that the elementary schools looked at. There was also one that the secondary schools looked at. So we had a total of 10 meetings during the month of September.
So does that mean outside testing, Ms. Swonka?
It does. And what it means is that, you know, parents present those, we take a look at those. We have 10 days within which to convene the team and look at those. And then see if it is a student who's already on an IUP. What is the impact and how we can put that into the IUP? And if not, then what do we need to do with that next?
So.
Yes.
Should that independent eval not be included as the referral source for potential initial evaluation? Because like, that is causing an initial evaluation, right?
Whenever there is an independent evaluation, the school district always has the right to do its own evaluation as well. Sometimes parents start. Sometimes parents, um, start with independent evaluations and come to us with those. And then we meet on those and see what areas we are looking at within our own school in terms of our concerns about access to the curriculum and where we may also need to evaluate. Sometimes students who are already on I U Ps, independent evaluations are looked at by parents for a wide variety of reasons, sometimes because they, um, they might look at them through both of the, um, medical or clinical lens than a school does and go in different areas that we don't go to because we're looking at it through strictly an educational lens. But we take that information and incorporate it into our I U Ps. Sometimes students who are not on I U Ps, parents seek out independent evaluations. And then we, um, at the building level, take a look at those and see, um, do, do we need to simply know this information about the student? Does this information lead us into a five oh four? Or does it lead us into an initial evaluation through the I U P process? In which case we would then conduct our own evaluation as well and move forward with that.
Right. But it is a parent originated identification.
It's a parent, um, originated and evaluation.
Okay.
Because in the other row, that parent is saying, I'm requesting testing for my child and there's.
There hasn't been a testing yet.
Right. They're saying, and then the school has to legally within a certain number of days do that.
And, and then in the bottom row, the parent is going and doing it.
Yeah, they went out to an asset source and they're bringing the report and sharing it and then you're all talking about it.
I guess my point is, is that it's in both cases, the parent is taking initial action to see this, to see some sort of evaluation take place.
Um, if you look at the initial evaluation box, sometimes a parent is taking that action and sometimes the school through M T S S is taking that.
Right. I meant the parent subset of the penultimate box, the penultimate, uh, call, uh, row there. And then the last row, meaning, so I understand the M T S S indicates that we have identified that person, uh, for an initial evaluation. Uh, what I'm saying is, is in both situations where it's a parental referral source for initial eval. So in other words, parent requests that to the district.
Yep.
Or in the situation where there's an independent eval, in both cases, the parent is initiating that situation.
And where the, how does that independent evaluation that one there? How does that fit in with the, does that result in an initial evaluation? Or I guess if that did, would that initial evaluation then represent four? Like, I guess, how does that? Is there a double counting between the independent evaluations? Like, how does that fit into the remaining boxes?
So independent evaluations are exactly that, and they don't necessarily go into an initial evaluation. They are standalone evaluations.
Yep.
And then if in fact there was an initial evaluation, that would incorporate our own testing as well. So it would not be a double count.
Would you take, would the independent evaluation result in an initial school evaluation as well? Is that a path that can happen or?
May or may not. It can be.
May I ask one more question?
Of course, please. That's what we're here for.
Um, independent evaluations, um, the, in, so if a parent requested, is, is there ever such a situation where a parent will request of the district initially eval and we say no?
Can't.
Can't do it legally.
We would not.
So that says it's illegal. Okay. So I was just trying to, okay, that answers my question then. Okay, thanks.
Now we have a timeline.
Yes.
Great. Okay.
All right.
Nothing in October.
Nope, nothing in October yet. We're all, we're all set with this one.
You will continue to fill in these months as you go along.
Every.
But you would look at.
That, that isn't, that's something that you're doing as a result of the student services form. I think it'd be identified that as a month to month we wanted that and you're doing this, you're responding to that.
Shall I stop sharing this?
Yes, that would be fine.
Can that document be shared when we get our packet? You know, if you give it to Jen, if you share with Jennifer beforehand, just so that we can preview the.
Of course.
That would be awesome, just so that we can have eyes on it before this moment.
Yes.
Just so that we, you know, just for that processing time.
Absolutely. You can form a.
Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's really.
For responding to that request.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And then with those little S L V subcategories.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Maybe with data packets. Excellent.
And it's a great cover page. I'm gonna. Ms. Swan, for the, you like the new font. That's for you.
Um, what I wanted to go on to and talk about a little bit next was our district curriculum accommodation plan. Um, thank you very much. So if, um, what you can see here is that there, if you go to our website, there is a section for the district accommodation plan. It had been there, I think, since at least two thousand eighteen. Um, so what we have done is we have updated that. And, um, what we have used to update that is through some of our initiatives and some of the things that we are presenting in our district, but also, um, some of the work that the M T S S steering committee did last year. Um, so here's our compass.
I just want to give this title page enough.
Exactly. Find your compass. We are charting the course and, uh, we have our new date there. Certified by us in two thousand twenty two.
Yep.
The highlights.
Yes. Um, so first in our new plan, we go through there and we talk about what a district accommodation plan is. And we talk about it through the Massachusetts general law so that everyone has a really good understanding of that. I'm not going to, um, read all of this to you, but it explains it and, um, what it ensures of under Massachusetts state law. If we look at the next page, we talk there about the particular composite public schools district accommodation plan, what our mission is. And in alignment with the D cap, how we monitor student progress, we implement supports, we work with data and the common core and all of the individual schools in our district. And then it shows you what is provided in this document that we're going to show you some of the strategies utilized, some of our, um, U D L frameworks, the Newcastle wheel that they have come out with, um, a visual on our multi-tiered system of supports and a sampling of our accommodation list. So here what we do is we explain all the varieties, um, the various strategies that are used in our district to help support all students in our district. And, um, we go through, and again, not going to read all of it to you, but our professional development, technology and executive functioning training, different teaching strategies, um, our mentoring programs, our P S O, our M T S S and so on. All of our teachers adhere to our universal design for learning. And, um, this visual really spells that out and shows you how that is supported throughout teaching. Next, after that is the castle wheel that is the basis for our S E L programming. And very importantly, this has been updated to show that, um, within classrooms, if you look at the outer circles, the S E L instruction and classroom climate, but then within the schools, the school, well, school-wide culture, practices and policies to support S E L. And then very important to us in our strategic plan this year, um, in this cycle, I should say, the families and caregivers and those authentic partnerships and aligning learning opportunities within the community, as we heard about at the very beginning of this meeting with our students being here. And all of this reflected in the updated castle wheel from the collaborative of academic and social emotional learning model. We then explain the M T S S model and what it is from ESSA in two thousand fifteen and the six important tenants of it, that all students are really capable of grade level learning with adequate support that is rooted in proactivity and prevention, that utilizes evidence-based practices, that decisions and procedures are driven by data and that the support that is given to students is based on their individual needs and that the implementation occurs schoolwide. There's a nice visual following that, similar to the S E L visual that shows, oh, I, you know what? Um, I, uh, our, um, district plan has it updated that has a visual for the M T S S model.
Oh, cool.
Okay, which I will actually hold up and show you. But if you go on our website and you look at it, you will see this. And it shows the multi-tiered system of support, the three tiers there, the universal supports at tier one, the targeted supports at tier two and the intensive supports at tier three. And that it really targets both academic behavioral and social emotional, and it's all about equitable access for all. And then finally, the work that we did through the M T S S steering committee and taking a look at accommodations that are available to all students within the general education program, that this particular list is representative, it is not exhaustive, and that the individual school levels, the elementary and the secondary, have both grade and age appropriate school decaps as well. But you can see here, um, a representative listing of all of the accommodations that can be put in place for all students. But again, it is not exhaustive. It is representative of the things that we do for all students through M T S S. Of course.
Is there an icon in Aspen that indicates a child on a D cap? So when a teacher opens their, their profile, it looks to be like if they're on I U P or five oh four, there's an allergy, there's a little icon on the top. The D cap indicated on there?
No, because the D cap really is for all students. It's a district curriculum accommodation plan that all students at tier one really can have access to.
Yeah.
If you're moving through M T S S and perhaps you're at tier two or tier three, there are no icons in Aspen for that.
Do you have a different experience in situ?
No, but I'm also not a classroom teacher in situ. So I'm accessing.
Having worked with. I, I don't know that that's a, that's an option.
I just think, you know, sometimes and conversations are going on at a classroom level with parents and stuff. And then, you know, specialists aren't always getting the same message and want to make sure kids are supported in every step of their. And in my experience in many different places of employment, you know, sometimes people are left out of the loop. I'm just thinking like how.
What we are finding and exploring in Aspen is how we can use through M T S S, consistent vertical alignment of Google Docs to track students as they go through the different tiers. And that can follow students, not just from grade to grade, but from school to school. But also then how can we really, um, flesh out our use of Aspen to have it embedded there also that could follow them through that. And that's part of our steering committee work this year. Last year, a, a huge portion of our, and I can jump right into that, M T S S steering committee work was on, you know, looking at surrounding towns, looking at our D cap, really kind of fleshing that out, working on those letters, those informational and kind of how are we aligned school to school in terms of, of, um, M T S S. Our work this year really is around those tiered supports. What are, what does it mean to be at tier two and tier three? And also what is the process and the procedure? And how is it going to be memorialized and follow students? And that is really our work this year of the steering committee. We have our first meeting next Monday on October seventeenth. Our steering committee has remained intact. Everybody is very excited and coming back for year two of that. So, um, we're very pleased about that. And, um, and it's really important to recognize, you know, the purpose of M T S S. And that is so that all students get the support that they need. Um, and if some of those supports translate into, um, you know, a real tier three, where we're looking at a five oh four or an I U P referral for students, that is fine. But no matter what tier it is at, and no matter whether that has happened or not, that all students really get all of the supports from the D cap and potentially from tier one or tier, uh, tier two or tier three. And that that, if that is where a student is meeting their success, that they can continue to receive those kinds of subjects.
And you're so correct, um, Lydia, about the, um, need to make sure that we vertically align those things and that where, if you're a teacher getting a student in a new grade level or a new school, that you're going to know that the student did have some plan at some point. And that if they're struggling, that's a guide for you to try to, you know, think about what you might be able to do. So I think the, the issue is it, it's using Aspen to do that. It's been awkward, but that's why we're doing the vertical with the Google Docs. So your point is right on.
And then it should be memorialized and then everyone knows where it's memorialized. So we know.
And that's my point. It's great when things are documented, but if no one makes you aware of that documentation.
That's why I asked if they knew that, because I would like to figure.
I know, or like that little bill when someone has an allergy.
We have all, we have those. We have, we have the ones they have.
Yeah. And I'll, you know, I pull that stuff up not for every student I work with, but every so often.
Yeah.
And then, and then sometimes if it's not indicated with an icon and you're, Aspen is not super to, to navigate always, you know, and you're just digging and cooking.
There's a lot of times.
Yeah, I guess just kind of in that steering committee process. Just like if, if the streamlining is done and how are people made aware of that memorialized information?
And the other thing too is that's important about it. And, and this is where I always, um, have, I guess, a worry. Maybe a little bit more than just a wonder, but a worry is that, you know, if, for example, let's pretend a second grader, um, rose to a tier two in M T S S, then the third grader, they should. But that, that doesn't start fresh. That student is there in tier two. And those things I know are happening. They are happening. Um, but really, you know, what we're really looking at, like I said, for this year is that process and procedure so that it is very clear, the memorializing of that and continuation of that process in a way that everybody knows about it. And, um, you know, I'm really excited to be able to work so hard in the M T S S arena because it is a little bit outside and broader than my special education arena. It is truly the student services arena for me. And, um, and, and I, I really do like to highlight that part of it.
So I want you to make sure you.
Can I follow one? I'm just, I'm thinking about this maybe a little differently than Lydia. So we, as parents, we don't have the tabs that inside people do around the students. And I'm thinking through like, when the kids transition and mo, and everybody in the whole stream of that child's experience is trying to help that child align with their I U P. What reminders are available to everybody in that pool to constantly say, hey, that person is on an I U P or this is a thing, just like a food allergy.
Mm-hmm.
I love the idea of like, is there a tab thing?
There is.
There is. And for allergies.
I'm just pointing to the.
I didn't see it as you're doing it.
I, you know, I get on, I get on Aspen usually just to see how the kids are doing periodically, but you guys seem to be on it all day.
Yeah.
And so I think I would, I'm glad that Aspen does that.
It does that.
I think that's a great thing to have. Yeah, whoever is.
Yes. Whoever's a student.
Okay.
Service provider. Yes, yes. And the other thing too is that, um, along those lines, just so you know, that, you know, the first month of school, every teacher, general educator, special educator, classroom teacher, related area teacher, whoever it is, who has a student who's on an I U P, signs off that they have read the.
That's it?
Okay.
Yes. And we make sure that that happens, that we make sure we provide it to them in a way that, you know, is, is conducive to their reading of it and that they sign off that they have read it. Yes.
And if there's an icon and you click on it, does it bring you to the I U Ps? You could refresh yourself. I'm thinking like you get, you sign off at the beginning of the year, Ted Carr has an I U P summary. And you get to February and you're not really sure, am I on track on that I U P? And how can I constantly remind myself to that?
But we also, in sharing, um, and signing off on those I U Ps, um, will show teachers, if they choose to look at through Aspen, here's a way you can get into Aspen and see it in its entirety as opposed to, um, just kind of like that little view, that some of the pop up that you get with the P A and B and whatever else that pops up there. Um, or, you know, do you want a hard copy? Keep it in a secure place?
It only is on. It only is also constantly working to update teachers as well.
Yes, whenever there is an update to an IEP, all of the people who service that child get notification that there has been an update to that IEP. And that comes through Aspen. Really good questions. Another area that I really wanted to update was, I know we talked last month a bit about CPAC, that just this week, we had our first CPAC meeting. Actually, Terrible August and I collaborated and had not really a CPAC meeting, but CPAC coffee and a meet and greet. And it was nicely attended with people who could be potential new members to our CPAC, which was really nice to see. And it, you know, it went on for a good hour. There was good discussion. We tried to keep it kind of like free flowing and people able to move around and talk to a wide variety of people and introduce themselves to each other and really accomplish the mission of CPAC that is a special education parents advisory council. And we really were able to speak to some of the things that we had heard and some of the steps we had taken through that advisory capacity of theirs. And also that it is a support for parents who have kids on IEPs to be able to collaborate and talk to each other about some of those things. And it was, it was really nice forum and nicely attended by, by Craig McCallum as our liaison for the school committee to CPAC, as well as Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins and some of our special education staff members. And, and like I said, the parents. It was, it was a nice, it was a nice meeting. And we will be following up with an agreed upon time with the most accessibility for most people to participate in CPAC meetings and hopefully set up our October meeting pretty soon. That was a very nice thing.
Ms. Swanka? I'll do, we'll just go in order quickly. Just, any comments, questions further?
This is fantastic. Thank you for all this. As far as the family involvement aspect of this, you're trying to reach out to more families to do PSO, you feel like with CPAC.
With CPAC, yes. PSO really calls it the building principals, but with CPAC.
Yeah, no, I noticed that too. But I also think that that'd be a good reader. But I just think that I'm more interested in the family involvement. Say here, homeschool coaches, for the strategic plan. What, what are the things like when someone gets on an IEP? There's something, like you mentioned, it might be health concerns. If you see something that you think that would be, say, obesity or a child not eating the right foods and that affecting their mood, which would affect their grades. Do we, do we have any suggestions for that? Like honestly, like my, to put it into like, I think exercising nutrition solves everything. You know, that's me. What I'm saying is if somebody goes in and has a child and the question is, do we ask them what the diet is or the exercise or any of that? Especially again, like if you have kids having diets and sugars, and we all know that those are attributed to bad behavior per se or learning disabilities. Are we pointing that out in some of our conversations with the parents? That it might be dietary or refer them to a doctor because of, you know.
So those kinds of things really will go, will go through the school nurse.
School nurse, okay. Well, that's maybe we can bring that up in the wellness committee about like, how that's so important. Honestly, like if you can't get your child to learn and they're not eating breakfast or the breakfast that they're eating is all sugar and they're jumping out of their seats. And we're like, what's wrong? You know, I'm just.
Well, that's really the beauty of our breakfast this year, isn't it? That we know the kiddos are coming to school and getting something to eat so that they are truly ready to.
Right, so you're recognizing how important nutrition is.
We do recognize it. We, we.
That's kind of what I'm just.
Yeah, we're really looking at the whole.
While we don't talk about it certainly as a qualifying factor for a learning disability per se, we do often have conversations with parents in a wide variety of forms, not just IEP meetings, around things like sleep hygiene.
Right, I was gonna say that.
You know, regular eating, those kinds of things.
Stress, a lot of the stress is what, what's exactly the issue with the student? Not so much that, I feel like I just don't hear, oh, it's the learning disability or something inherited. Well, let's back up here. Let's, let's find out exactly where that student is. And it could, again, it's social, emotional, learning. You know, I've had parents in my situation get very angry at me because I've suggested to them that they're the fault, that why their child is not healthy is because you're buying the food. Where are they getting it? And I've had parents like, wow, wow, wow. Like, so I understand where, where you're at, but I do, I do want to kind of point that out. Because that's the field of management. You know, we've changed people's, we've changed and helped kids graduate from high school because of their lack of exercise and nutrition. So I've done it, I'm just saying.
Thank you, Miss Keating. So, Mr. McCallum?
No, thank you.
This is.
I'm all set.
All set. I'll just thank you, Ms. Swanka, for the, I do like the new format of the, of the presentation. I like the district curriculum accommodation plan. I think it's very clear. Is it something that is available to parents?
Yes, it's right on our website in a couple of places.
It's also in my newsletter.
So I would, I think of the pages in there, pages three and seven are, would be particularly interesting to parents as they list the available services.
Yes.
And I don't think that's something that's necessarily at hand anywhere I've seen as well as we've done here. So thank you for doing that. So unless there's anything further, Ms. Swanka, I think we'll move on to our budget resources and governance section.
Just a quick, quick thing I didn't mention, I can. We did have a superintendent, assistant superintendent coffee. And I'll thank the parents who watched that. It was virtual. Okay. Did you have real coffee though? I did make a point that they're gonna have, they're gonna have to bring their own coffee. And we'll mix them up in person virtually. And it's also, that's on the Cohasset live streaming website for anybody who wasn't able to go. We did spend a few minutes just talking about updates and things. Sorry.
No, that's, that's great.
Broke agenda, I forgot to put that in the beginning.
It's, you know, I would like to add those things because I think it's important for the community to realize that there is a lot of outreach out there that you, as administration in particular, do. And so maybe we create a standing agenda item under our community relations and communications, which is a lonely section of the agenda anyway. But we just do a reminder of things that will be done for outreach. I think that'd be helpful. And actually fill in for section G, which never gets any attention at all tonight either. So with that, we'll move on to budget resources and governance. Dr. Sullivan, I hear we have some surplus materials.
We do, and maybe Dr. Scollins would be better to talk about this a bit, but let me show.
Is it true we're just, we're disposing of Earth's waters? Because I think we need those.
It's well, yeah. I'll like Dr. Scoll.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Mills has been, has been going into areas and cleaning things out. These are a lot of very, very old science books that are out of date. They're not, they're, they're just not appropriate. And we have, we have other resources now. So he's been going through those, two thousand and seven.
But no, no resale value.
No, so what, yeah, so what I ask principals to do when they do have books or to call Paul and they'll come in and they'll look and they'll say, yes, I will pay you for those. No, they are not worth anything. But so these are, yeah, yeah. You still have to donate them to other countries, but it's just, it's so expensive to send them now that they don't, they don't even want to look.
Like other countries don't want to do the material. It's not fair. It's ridiculous.
We had, we had someone who was really outdated, but it was, I'm just saying. This we wouldn't send. So anyway, but you can see there's, there's a large number of them. So he's been cleaning out the storage room.
That's great.
Yeah, so.
So we're not actually disposing of Earth's waters. We're, as far as a book entitled Earth's waters, that's good.
Correct. And Ed Savage, this is all signed. So Ed Savage has been involved in all of this too, to make sure that the teachers know.
We're not disposing of human biology and health.
No, our astronomy. I think the rest of the planet would be upset with that, weather and climate.
Should this be a double asterisk vote on this?
I was going to ask, do you need, do you need a vote?
You do need a vote on the disposal item. I apologize, that was a dumb shift.
So, yeah, we can still vote. So any, any, open forum, any questions in the committee?
So where do these books actually go? You're telling me it's around, you burn them like fall fifty one?
Sometimes, or they might, you know, it depends. Like elementary, sometimes if they have books that are just more tattered than anything, they'll put them out for sale and they can take them and run with them. But these will probably go into recent.
We're, we're very cautious of the fact that we don't want like books out there that'd be in the, say, class of public schools. First of all, a hundred of them send some dumpster that get returned to us sometimes. Like, we just don't want. People, people say this is, you can't. So there's actually a process for getting rid of the books that we go through.
So one question for me. Every one of these has copyright two thousand and seven. Is that a coincidence or is that?
No, I think it was, my guess is it was probably all purchased all at the same time.
Okay.
And that was what they were using for their curriculum then. You can see.
We do this every year, guys. Every year. So, draw the motion.
Just moved. We're seconded. Whoever, strongly about it.
Aye.
All in favor? All right, the ayes have it. Dispose those surplus materials.
You will get that.
All right, thank you. Next, any transportation updates?
No, I think not one. We're in, we're in good shape with transportation. I haven't heard any complaints about anything. We've got a driver set up. We've got one more on her way, just waiting for a test.
I know we had one replacement bus. One of our buses was out of commission, is that correct?
Sue.
It went out to be fixed, but it's back. I mean, it was just we borrowed the bus for a day.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know exactly what you were referring to. I assumed it was back, but I.
Yes.
Would you say that we still need a fifteen passenger van? Or we've been, how we've been doing with the SEO center on that?
We have, we have been using the SEO center, we have lost it. Just timing wise, it's not working. So you'll probably see.
We still need that van.
Well, again, that's, that van, it was advocated for because of situations that may arise from needing to transport students and having issues with getting transportation. So like we, we don't want to fall out of compliance with any potential special education students who have special education programs who need transportation. We almost did.
I think you're, you're talking athletic.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, you'll see that on the capital.
I was thinking a different van.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. I'm just bringing it up.
I hear you, I hear you.
You will see that on the capital.
Bringing up every year and I just keep doing it.
Transportation questions?
I think there's an upcoming meeting on the electric bus study or something. You were.
And we, it's on report.
I see that as a transportation issue.
Mr. Carr pretending like he doesn't know and Ms. Vodel is holding the meeting.
There's a lot of overlap, but definitely, I'll be present there too.
Anything else?
I have a question. What is the latest on the Deer Hill Bus Parking Lot situation? How?
The engineers are supposed to go out this week. I don't know if they have or not. I can reach out to Glenn with my friend. He's been following that.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's reach out to, you know, let's just be a squeaky wheelers or what happens. I want to stop paying for that.
Yeah, it's, it's like who to push on it is the problem because it's the engineer who's, I tell you, it's us, it's just the engineer who's.
All right.
Just keep asking.
Well, you know, I'm always happy to talk to people.
We do, we do need that. We were just talking about that.
Annoying is my middle name sometimes, so.
Upon, upon further inspection of that spot, it's just going to be a really good spot for that. It's going to add a lot to the parking spots. It's good.
You know, I was thinking about that too. What about the fact that you, is that something that we talked about a solar cop boy?
Potent, well, potentially, like that, it gives more potential to a, to, in my opinion, from a sightline point of view, it's off to the side.
Yeah.
I, I can't speak to the, the way that, you know, how it would work there, but I, that, I think there's a lot of potential there.
Yeah, only because, I only raised that because I didn't like the visual of that. You wouldn't really see it from, I didn't like the fact that they were going to put the other end last time because you was visually not there.
It is further off to the side.
It's further off on the side. In fact, the teachers could park there and keep their cars covered from snow.
Well, it, it will, I mean, remember, it is, it's going to afford, well, it will afford twenty additional spots.
Yeah. Is it too far away?
It's not too far away. But that's not an agenda item right now, so we should probably move on to something different. And we can talk about that.
I just wanted to know what was the latest because I want to make sure that we keep on pushing forward.
It was supposed to be this week.
I'm happy to reach out to anyone if you need any extra support, badge or anyone. I'm, I'm ready to give them.
Yeah, I do, I do think the department is fair under transportation, but the solar covers for parking lots probably goes to far. All right. Thank you. So any food service updates? Hearing none.
Well, we sort of heard one from, you know, we, I mean.
You got to talk a little deeper about that.
Mr. Keating and I went to, you know, we, we had a, so, as you know, we just established this, this food service and nutrition subcommittee. And we had just had our first meeting. And we thought it was appropriate because we're looking to try and figure out or identify processes or, or areas that we can replicate that are good. And then obviously places for, that have room for improvement. So in order to do that, we have to understand, you know, the starting point. So we've had Marilyn Herden, Herden, how do I say her last name? We had her run through sort of at a very high level the various regulations surrounding, you know, school food and the offerings and the sourcing for the food, sort of general understanding. Then we had our meeting, our inverse meeting at the high school cafeteria. So I can picture of it. Because I'm, I'm most concerned right now. I mean, we're talking about, you know, the possibility of perhaps constructing a new middle high school. So, so from a facilities perspective, you know, that's sort of up in the air. We'll, we'll see where that goes. I know that they're working some of the space that they have right now. There's another additional room that they're going to create à la carte, sort of grab and go line, which will reduce the traffic backup in the main cafeteria area where the students go to, to get the food served to them. It's a kind of a logjam during the high school lunch because there's only one lunch. There's a huge influx of, of students at one time in that area. So this will assist with that. But I'm, I, I am personally much more concerned with the, the menu offerings and the quality of the food that we are providing to the kids and we're serving the kids. So at the middle high school today, we had lunch and as Dr. Sullivan stated, that it was, it exceeded my expectations in terms of quality mostly. There are a few areas that I, I still have concerns about. And I actually think that all, and I have more concerns about the elementary levels because we have different preparation abilities there. Their, their lower preparation abilities than we have in the middle high school. So I expected the middle high school to be better. And, and so we're going to go through all these each building. We're going to have lunch at, and I have lunch with kindergartners at one point in time. And we're going to see where we might be able to improve and what we'd need in the food services department to effectuate those improvements from a resources perspective. So this is the first step. And, you know, I, I think we're, we're in pretty good footing with middle high school. One area that I saw was an area of improvement is some of the food we source through. What is the, the word?
Commodities.
Commodities, okay. So through the, the, the government, the federal government, it's, it's procured through commodities, federal government commodities. And as you would expect, perhaps some of these items aren't of the best quality. Some of them are of fine quality. Like I had some applesauce. I tried a lot of different things just because I wanted to see, I wanted to, you know, so I, I got a bunch of different like meals. And one of the things I tried was like, like, you know, the, the apple sauce, unsweet apple sauce, that's from commodities, but it's great. It's perfect. It's, it's good. It's a good, like, you know, there's no added sugar, it's fruit. It's good. And there was some of the proteins, like the patties, chicken patties, the burger patties. I, I think those are substandard. Some of the kids like it. I, I don't, I don't think that's, that meets the level that we want to, I think, meet or, or realize in Cohasset. So, you know, but, but there's a lot of considerations that go into that, you know, and obviously it's sourced through this government. So, you know, but, but there's a lot of considerations that go into that, you know, and obviously it's sourced through this government. I mean, these are, I don't want to put anyone on, give them the incorrect impression that any of this is like inedible or something like that. I just think we can do better there. And that's what we're looking to do. Mr. Kieran and I, we're trying to identify areas where we can do better. And so, for example, I've seen other districts who have some different resources that we might be able to add to Cohasset's arsenal, for lack of a better phrase, that, that would realize things like, you know, grass-fed, grass-fed burgers from like local, you know, local, like farms or something like that, and it's sourced locally. Like, like Dr. Sullivan had that picture of the haddock. That's awesome. That's the kind of thing we want. It was, it was caught that day. We got it from Boston, came in, and the chef prepared that. It prepared it from, from just raw fish and paired it with carrots, potatoes, lemon, breadcrumbs, parsley. It was awesome. It was great. That's what you want to see. Then they had the, you know, this is haddock, this is where it came from, what haddock is next to it. Awesome. That is really, really great. It's the kind of thing we want to see. It was really, really excellent. It was well done. We tried it. That was, we, we had, we tried it. It was great. And we want to see more of that. So the good thing about proteins is that obviously, like, you know, beef is beef and fish is fish, as long as obviously it's fresh, right? So there's not too many issues in terms of like the fat content or the sugar content, or the, you know, it's not like getting, you know, a muffin or something like that, where they could vary significantly between products. The protein is a protein, so as long as, as we're sourcing that protein, it's gonna usually meet the regulations. It's just a matter of, you know, working some other, maybe particular issues that are probably too in-depth to get into in this meeting. But we're, we're trying to develop solutions to, to think about where else we might be able to source these things. So, and I expect that's gonna come into play even more in the elementary levels because we can't, we're, we're not preparing fish at the elementary levels for a couple of different reasons. But one of them is because we don't have the kitchen to really do what they were doing there. We can prepare some things, like some of the hot meals would be, you saw the, the, on Dr. Sullivan's presentation, the main entree area. That was today a pasta offering, spaghetti meatballs or Tuscan chicken pasta. And we do have the capacity to, to, to prepare those right then and there at the elementary schools. So that's good. However, you know, we're restricted a little bit in, in the, in the preparation of certain foods in the elementary levels, the serving of certain foods in the elementary levels, and also the storage of certain levels. We don't have walk-in, walk-in freezers or refrigerators. So, you know, all of these things are gonna be something that we're going to, you know, look at, reexamine, evaluate, you know, what, what, what the potential is in each building. And this is just the first step. But it's really exciting because I don't think that we, as a committee, have dug too deep into the food services, at least since, in the four years I've been on it, and, 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 and the six years now, I think, that Mr. Kieran's been on it. So. Four, no, five, five, five years, I think.
This is your first.
Longer than me, yeah. So, so we're trying, we're trying to, so I, I just, I have identified that as an area for, for potential improvement in the district. And, and so Mr. Kieran and I are trying to do that. And Marilyn Herden is, is, is being great, very welcoming staff today, by the way. I, I, I don't want to neglect it to mention that. It was really great. They were so welcoming to us. They're so happy to have us, talking through everything and showing us the whole kitchen. Everything was really, really helpful and edifying, knowing where we're at. But I will say that generally speaking, they're getting really great food at the middle and high school. It's, it's good. It's good. It was, it exceeded expectations. I harbor, you know, some concerns about elementary, but that's why we're going there because I don't know yet, because I haven't experienced it. So we'll keep you posted.
Mention my, just as a side note, my favorite moment of the whole visit, I don't even know if you, you caught this, Paul, but I actually sat down at the lunch table before you were back talking, and I'm sitting there and I'm, I'm alone. And a student named Jay came over and said, "Dr. Sullivan, are you alone? Would you like to sit with us?" Which, that was the coolest thing. And actually, I'm gonna acknowledge that student by calling his house, but it's the Prince of Mills, somebody did. So, because he, we talked about it afterwards. He wanted to go with the towel, but the student was genuinely, he knew me, and he was like, "Dr. Sullivan, you wanna come over?" And I went over and talked to him about what they liked about lunch.
Another funny student interaction was when I was watching the high school service with Marilyn to the side. I was behind the serving areas, and one of the students asked me if I was the CEO of lunch.
That's Paul. It's Paul.
And I just want to reiterate what Craig was saying, and, and it's just exciting that, it's just, it's a whole community that's wanting to do this. So, look, I, I want to thank Craig for teaming up in Sioux. All, I think the whole administration needs to, because it's, it's gone, it's definitely exceeded our expectations today. And like Craig says, I think it's the protein that has to be, and it can be. I mean, you know, grass-fed beef, that's all I like to eat. I usually eat organic chicken, and there's reasons why, because of the food process. And that's something that we can talk about later, but this is definitely a start. I think that the vending machine's gonna, I, I think it's gonna sell out because, you know, you got twenty-eight lacrosse team, you got the soccer girls. I mean, I, I, like, I, I usually give food in the bus on the way home. And I see what the kids, there's like one grape left. So good luck with packing that then.
I was impressed with the offerings, to be honest. I, I thought it was nice to see fruit and fresh food and at very reasonable, in today's day and age, prices.
Yeah, they had cut-up cannibal, but yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm excited. I'm happy.
So remember, plug again, you get a free meal if you put a zero.
Has that been announced on like morning announcements?
I don't know. I, I just, I just learned that today. It was one of the things I learned. I mean, this is a brand-new machine, obviously.
I know. I just feel like throw that at the morning announcements.
I know Tara made an announcement.
She did.
Tara lunch today. So maybe it'll be empty tomorrow.
I, I expect it to be empty. I really do.
Yeah, we want to turn over. Yeah, that's great.
Kudos to that company for doing that. That's a nice thing.
Well, you know, interesting. Keeping things moving forward. What we, that's, I think that's it on budget resources and governance, unless anything else from the administration. And so now we'll move on to community relations and communications. This is where we typically have our subcommittee reports. We'll accept the subcommittee report as read and submitted. Any other subcommittee reports before we go to liaison reports?
Oh, I have liaison.
So I think we got budget resources and, I forgot what the other one is, communication, food service. So, all right, I'll move to liaison reports. And I have a Saint Ange who has the floor for AEC liaison.
So I attended the AEC meeting last month, and buses were brought up during that meeting. And then we actually talked about the Deer Hill Parking Lot and the potential for solar canopies as well. And I know, Craig, you don't like that aesthetic, but that I have experienced, that it's, I feel like, like with most technology changing and improving. And in the time since we had that presentation, maybe a year and a half ago, I personally experienced other places, like in Florida on vacation, where they're just like far more aesthetically pleasing setups, like at the Palm Beach Zoo. And anyway, we, we talked about that at the meeting as a potential down the road. And then the electric school bus, a proposal's been put together. And so I know Craig and I will be on that Zoom tomorrow for Dr. Sullivan. So, okay, there will be a healthy representation.
Be busy tomorrow.
On the phone call, or on the Zoom at four tomorrow. So we will bring an update at the next meeting. But, you know, a lot of credit to Tanya for continuing to research and push these initiatives because I think that they will be able to benefit the schools. You know, they're always bringing up, how can we incorporate solar and checking on their roofs? So they're really on our side. It's great to have all of that happening behind the scenes.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Ange. The other open forum, any other liaison updates?
Open forum, we just go, yes. CPAC, Mr. Auger gave an update, but I just, I just wanted to share that I, I've been attending that group for about a year now, maybe a little longer. And it's, so we saw a lot of new faces. Usually, I think throughout the year, you start seeing the same faces, but new faces, because they're looking for new leadership there. I would impress upon anyone that is a special ed family or, you know, or five oh four family to consider getting involved with that group. I, I am a gen ed parent, as far as I know right now. But it's, it's been immensely edifying for me as a school committee member to be, to participate in that group. I, I've learned a lot. There's a lot to that world. And if you're in that world, or if you're just starting to, you know, wade into those waters, which are very intimidating, you have a lot of support there and a ton of knowledge. Parents in that group are very knowledgeable and committed to all things special education. So I just wanted to sort of put a plug in there because I know that they're looking for some assistance with leadership there. And I've had some of the most, like, robust, engaging interactions I've had with family members in that, in that forum. So consider it. I just want to sort of put a plug in there and thank them for always having me and for being open-minded and patient with me because I don't, I don't know too much about that. But it really helps me approach these student services updates in, from, from a little bit, a little bit more of an enlightened perspective, so on, fairly, fair, to a fair degree, a layperson, special education. So just want to say that.
I just got one quick thing. Tomorrow is National Bring Your Bible to School Day. Just my eyes, October sixth. So we see a bunch of children with their bibles. It is National Bible Day. Throw that out.
All right. Hearing no other items for our only item G, but item F, school committee governance. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated by me. I have reasonably anticipated everything. We, we don't have any minutes on the agenda to approve today. I will open forum, any future agenda items coming out of this meeting that we'd like to follow up with staff, a, a future meeting?
Yeah, if anybody, if anything we could probably do is the car line is still an issue. My son Jack, where I'm horrified that two middle school kids just jumped in front of my car the other day. I, I honestly think the middle school kids should get picked up over there and the high school kids over here. The idea that we just, like, let them go, and all the kids run across the street without crossguards or anything. It's literally a street. You got kids learning. I was in front of a family the other day, the son was driving. You know, it just really concerned me about the, the traffic and the kids just jumping in front of cars. So that said, I, I just think that we should put that on the agenda and ask the fire chief to come in and really address the problem. Because if you, have you had taken a street and you just see children running across the street without crossing guidelines? It's, 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 it's mind-blowing. So, like, I would ask that we put that on as an agenda so that we can really find out if it makes more sense for the children in the middle school to go here, here. You know, we talked about security system, security team, something. It's just a really concerning moment. And I invite any other school committee members to try to see what I'm talking about at two thirty.
What they had add is that the, the, the current plan was actually set by the fire department and the police department. So like, the, the, when we did think about moving it back to facilitate both areas, they were steadfast against.
Well, it doesn't work.
Well, I think the problem, and this is part of our new building situation, is that we don't have good drop-off and pickup areas. They're, they're tight to the road. They, they come into like a, almost a pinch right at a, at a very vulnerable place where we put like a, you know, a crosswalk.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, I, I just think a, a paintbrush would help, too, to identify the.
So this is the one where we discuss the thing.
Well, the other thing is the, right, but the other thing is the, just so everybody knows, the, the police and the safety folks have, I have been very much offered to potentially meet with some members of school committee to, to discuss that, to talk about, because we all want it to be as safe as possible. And I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and say that I love the, the pick-up, drop-up. I'm with you. But I, but I also, I just, just as a point of information, just to know that it's, it's really a, yeah, what's that?
Hold on.
That, that really is a, it was set by the, it was set by the safety officials. They actually physically drew the lines to create the student parking lot move, move. Well, I was here, it was in the years I was here. So really.
Well, there's definitely been work done. I just think that there has been more work done. So I would just ask the chair to please consider that for the next feature.
All right. Any, any other suggestions before we move on?
Metco, I'd like to get a Metco on, not, not in the immediate future, but I want to keep that on the radar. We need to get that in. I want to have another forum. That, that was awesome.
Yes, we, we do have on our, our list, a scheduled meeting for that, for the student spotlight, spotlight.
Great. No, no one's responding to that.
Category of minutes, I am catching up. So by our next meeting, I'll have some draft minutes.
Fantastic. Thank you. Let me know if you can help. We can, all right. So then we'll, that's, if there are no reasons to move into executive session. There are no reasons to move into executive session. And with that, I will most, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor? All opposed? unanimously approved, passed. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for all your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for watching and staying with us.